Okay, good evening. Hello, everyone. This is the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Virtual Board Meeting, Monday, May 24th, 6:00 PM. Ms. Dean, could you, or actually, I call this meeting to order and I'll read Governor Northam's Executive Number 53. We are still acting under Governor Northam's Executive Order EO 53 restricting public gatherings. According to Code 2.2-3708.2A3, it permits public bodies to meet electronically to discuss business required or necessary to operation of the public body and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities in times of emergencies and to address COVID-19. Okay, can we get a roll call of commissioners, please?
Chair Rickert?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Green?
Here.
Commissioner Maddie Green? Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughter? I think she's muted. Mayor Walker?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. And let's take a moment of silence, whoops, sorry. Just to prepare for the meeting. Okay, thank you. And Ms. Slaughter texts that she did say yes, she is here, and we'll have to make sure that she can speak when she needs to. I'm not sure what the issue is with the muting, but I do, Ms. Slaughter, I do see you on the webinar.
Chair Rickert, I just want to reiterate that Ms. Slaughter does have the ability to speak throughout the entire meeting. She's just currently muted herself.
Oh, okay, okay, wonderful. So, welcome. General announcements would just be that the CRHA Board has various committees and meetings, and the safety meeting is every other Tuesday. The next one is tomorrow evening. It's always the same link in passcode. There's a redevelopment committee meeting every other Thursday at 4:00 PM, so the next one is June 3rd. And residence service committee every second Tuesday of the month at 1:00 PM. And then we'll meet again as a board June 28th. And we do have a work session on the books for June 10th. We'll just need to decide what that work session is about. Are there any general announcements or reminders from anyone that they'd like to add tonight? Okay, then we will move on. We'll start with public comments, followed by the FAR comments. Let's see.
If anybody would like to address the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're calling in. You have three minutes to speak. Chair Rickert, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Are you sure? Anyone want to speak?
Well, now I see a couple of hands raised. All right, first is Shelby Edwards. Ms. Edwards, you are on with the commission.
Hi, I was raising my hand for the FAR comment. I can't give that right now, but I'm seeing a non from Betsy, so I will go ahead and give that. Thank you so much. Hi, everybody. My name is Shelby Edwards. I'm speaking on behalf of FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. We are the duly recognized and federally mandated representative of all public housing residents. So, we are really pleased to share that FAR is beginning the Positive Visions Workshop at Sixth Street in West Haven. We conducted two last week and plan to have three this upcoming week. In these workshops, we aim to get residents familiar with what redevelopment is and how they may play a part pending their site involvement. Speaking of site involvement, while FAR recognizes that exact timing for site redevelopment is contingent on many factors, FAR asks and hopes that we can continue talking about creating a calendar of which sites are next for redevelopment. We have had more than one resident pose the question, "When is it our turn for updated housing?", which we think speaks to the interest there is in resident-led redevelopment in our area, which is really exciting. FAR is also looking forward to having, so a little some clarification on the role of security in the communities, of course, how we could help with that, and how that happens in collaboration with other community resources as necessary. We are also seeking clarification on specifically the role of the Charlottesville Police Department. FAR would like to close by once again saying thank you so much for the Housing Authority for your work. As we all know, it is not easy and often it is thankless work, and we look forward to continued collaboration with one another with hopes of solution-oriented dialogue, open communication, and overall enjoying each other's presences. So, thanks y'all so much. I'm here with some folks from my team, so if I didn't catch anything, FAR team, hold me accountable. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Brandon Collins. But before we go to Brandon, I just want to let Ms. Slaughter know, thank you to Leslie Dean, who prompted me, that you might not know how to unmute yourself on the phone, and that is by pressing star six, Ms. Slaughter. And Brandon, you are on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. I actually raised my hand because I was a little worried that Shelby hadn't made it in, but I'm so glad she did, and of course, we echo what she had to say. We encourage you to pass the resolution tonight to begin engagement with residents at Sixth Street and at West Haven, and FAR is prepared to already be doing some of that engagement. Last week, we had two workshops. As we were doing outreach, before those workshops, we had a lot of positive response from Sixth Street, and I think we're going to have really great community engagement. The workshops focused on a variety of things, but the, you know, the first things that people say are always the most interesting. So, central air conditioning. And that was unprompted. And the other was children, a huge focus on children, not just developing a neighborhood that's good for children with play spaces, but also involving them in the process. So, I thought that was really, really awesome. We'll be doing two at West Haven on Thursday. One at 2:30 and one at 6:00. And we hope residents will attend that. We'll be in front of the clinic outside, socially distanced. And we have a follow-up meeting with Sixth Street residents on Wednesday, so that's how things are looking, and I will send some notes about more of that to the redevelopment committee at some point. But again, we encourage you to keep moving this forward, and thank you very much.
And if anybody else would like to address the commission, please click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're joining us by phone. Chair, I now see no more hands.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the comments from FAR. It is really exciting to hear that residents are coming out and wanting to talk about redevelopment, and I love the idea of bringing children into the process of designing their own, you know, spaces. Okay, so, we have approval of minutes from February 22nd and March 22nd.
I just read the February 22nd ones right before this meeting, so I moved to approve the February 22nd. Do we do them separately? Is it one of them the next? I moved to approve February 22nd.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the February 22nd minutes? I guess we need the roll call. So, can we get a roll call, please, Ms. Dean?
Chair Rickert?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddie Green? Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughter?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Did anyone have time to read the March 22nd minutes? I know they came in right before the meeting. Do you want to wait, and do you need time to read them for next week or next month, or?
Yeah, I see some nodding, so, yeah.
Is that yes for next month? Okay. All right, so we'll save those for next meeting. Next, are there, well, let's start with the Safety Committee and hear how that's been going, and then if anyone else has updates from other meetings or committee meetings, it would be great to hear from those two. Ms. Goldblatt, would you like to fill us in?
Sure, I missed the most recent, the last Safety Committee meeting we have, so there might be attendees in the audience who want to, I've read the notes, but I don't want to see what happened. There was a lot of discussion and has been a lot of discussion in the past few about the role that residents want to see for police and what policing, what they want policing to look like in their neighborhoods, but also the role that they want various community safety initiatives to play, and also a feeling of like a perceived, I should say, like a perceived lack of services or a desire for creativity around certain services. So, we spent a lot of time discussing mental health and trauma services. I saw in the notes from the last Safety Committee meeting that this came up again. And there was a feeling on the part of some residents that there might not be adequate local support in Charlottesville, and that there isn't, there aren't mental health services available where people understand the experience of living in public housing and the kinds of issues that people in public housing deal with routinely. And so, some discussion about potentially trying to look beyond Charlottesville for residents who say that they're interested in Zoom counseling to see if there are any other initiatives elsewhere where people would offer us counseling services who are really familiar with the demographic that we most want to serve. So, some residents said that they were comfortable with Section 10, sorry, Region 10, others felt less comfortable or felt like they'd had bad experiences, and so, we talked about ways to provide that. We also talked a lot about not so much peer counseling with peer support, and thinking about various ways to set up peer support networks so that people can increasingly feel like they're part of a community. In terms of other services, there's been a huge emphasis on a need, and both Ms. Edwards and Mr. Collins said this in their public comments, but for youth services, especially at all the sites, that some sites have services that are not available to others, but also especially as children grow older. So, thinking about people beyond the elementary school years and making sure that they have things to do and services throughout the summer in downtime, and people really looking for these services. So, there's a desire, people feel like that would contribute to safety, to have kids who feel like they have really meaningful things to do and that they're listened to and that they have places to go. So, there's a real desire for more services, and I think a continued some frustration with the Police Department and a desire for clarity on just what they will and will not provide in public housing, as well as on the part of some residents in anxiety about what it looks like to not have security at various sites right now. So, I know that we've been working towards an RFP to think about the various kinds of services we would send out for, and you can see those notes are up. I assume the notes that I've received are also up on the website. But those, so that was in the most recent one. Does anyone who was in the last meeting, who's in the audience, want to fill in, say, know anything about what happened at that last meeting? If, I mean, if not, the, I mean, I can read the notes, but they should be up publicly. And the next, we have a meeting tomorrow, so anyone who's on this call will be meeting at 6:00 PM. The link and passcode are all up on the CRHA website and on FAR's website, and I believe it's also on the Facebook page for both.
Great.
And I just have a quick. So, I spent some time today trying to figure out, again, what this partnership and what the requests are, and talked to Mr. Sales, Chief Brackney, and Chief Brackney all actually joined, asked her to join in case there was any questions. But one of the things that came out of the last meeting with them, and I talked to Ms. Edwards too today, was the request for this, a letter to state that there was partnership between CRHA, the Board, FAR, and and what did, was everyone clear on what that partnership looked like? And so, I got some feedback today, which added that to my list of things to try to figure out today that that maybe wasn't going in the direction to get that, you know, get that letter. And maybe everybody wasn't clear on exactly what, you know, Chief Brackney was requesting and why. And so, if that was something that Board members needed, you know, if CRHA, if FAR, I just wanted to, I just asked her to be available if there were any questions there.
Would and I see, yeah, I see Chief Brackney on here, so maybe she can chime in on this. What, does that sound like something the Safety Committee would draft and then send to all the partners to, for comment?
Well, I don't think that-
Are they wanting it to come from residents' perspective?
So, from what my understanding is at this point, is there is an agreement on on this letter, or why there is a need for a letter, and Chief Brackney's position is that in response to the security firm no longer being present, that they are being asked to increase police presence, and this is coming at the, you know, heels of a lot of change, but very loud community response to not having cameras, not having police presence, and now there is a request for this increase. I understand from some of the conversations that I had that people don't want to be maybe liable if something goes wrong, and if the police do something that they shouldn't do, and I don't think that that is any, of course, once officers are in a community, we can't say what will or will not happen, but I don't think that is anyone's intention. But more so, the intention is from a community who is asking to defund where there is being a significant amount of resources being spent on increased patrol on the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday timeframe right now, there is a, there will be an increase to the budget essentially taking the place of what some of the security officers would have done, and attempting to move away from the how policing happens, which is the thing I'm even having to shift from, and not so comfortable with it, is that officers respond to a call or to a crisis or to an emergency versus being on-site to prevent crises, emergencies, and that seems to be what we're, you know, moving away from. So, that was the question, and I see that Ms. Edwards has her hand up. So, maybe she wants to chime in, and then again, if there's any questions for the chief, she's on the line.
Are we able to move unmute Ms. Edwards? Do we need Mr. Rice to do that? Can we unmute Ms. Edwards from the attendees list?
Yes, one second.
Yep, thank you. I didn't know you were the only one who could do that.
She should be there.
Hi, everyone. So, what I would love, while all parties are present, I think tonight, if I could just receive some clarification about, one, what the function of the letter is, I think that would be really helpful. And I think, two, what the ask of the Police Department is, because I think that the function of the letter, I think I kind of understand, but we would, FAR would have some specifics that we would want in the letter, but I think the thing I understand less is what exactly the Police Department would be doing. So, that would be helpful for me.
Mr. Rice, could you elevate Chief Brackney?
Yes, one moment. Chief, you're now a panelist in the commission.
Oh, and I also want to be clear, I probably won't go back and forth today. I'm very much a sit and think once folks share their perspective type thing, so want to give that caveat. I'm going to mostly listen tonight.
So, thank you, Mayor, for having the conversation. So, Ms. Edwards, that's exactly why I asked for a letter, to clearly identify the additional ask of CRHA from CPD specifically, so that we could be clear that as we were being asked to increase our presence in the community, as we were being asked to use whatever tools and technologies that we had to be able to respond to the increase in violence in the community, as well as the fact as of May 2nd, there was no security team or security profile there in the community, and what might that look like to address high levels of violence or incidents of violence related to the shootings and the assaults that were occurring? The reason I wanted a letter is to say that we were all using a community approach, and that we were being asked to come in as part of a community plan to reduce the harm and the violence in the CRHA properties, most specifically as well. The reason the letter is important is we show a unified front that we're all attempting to do this, and that we're all partners in this, and that we're all asking to use whatever those tools and resources we are to make the community feel safer. In addition to that, is oftentimes, anytime officers in uniform or an increased presence in any of the minority communities, name of our black or brown communities or any of our CHRA properties, the first thing we get is response and pushback that we are overpolicing and then underprotecting. So, when there is a lot of presence, I want the community to understand that this is something that the residents are asking for of us as well, and that the security team, and this isn't Chief Brackney just deciding to flood the community with presence, and it is a delicate balance between having a lot of great police presence, where attempting to address violence, understanding that oftentimes, there are other things, and this is the struggle we have, that they're going to observe being in that area. And then the pushback becomes then, I'm targeting black and brown men for arrest rates and incarceration. So, if there is a spike in numbers, it doesn't become someone's talking point that this is an approach that I am using on my own. And the necessity for that is this. Just last week, the last update that I had on it as of 2021, there were 121, let this sit for a minute, 121 verified shootings in Charlottesville, with the majority of them within a very small portion of the community, and those are CHRA properties. That is up literally 51%. We had this year, this time to date, 2020, 80. We've had 38 aggravated assaults, 15 shootings, and five robbery-related with firearms coming out of a very small concentrated population. I would like our presence, which we are hiring our overtime officers to do, and my budget is skyrocketing, is expensive to hire officers to do nothing but concentrated patrols in First, First West Avenue, South First Street, West Haven, and Sixth. That is extremely expensive proposition that cannot be supported and should not, the community should not want that to be supported for a long term. We have to figure out what is an overall long-term sustained approach to the violence. And because I've asked for specifically the Chair of Safety and Security, the Chair of the Board, Mr. Sales, and FAR, to say that this is what they were in agreement and what they are asking for as well, because we've been in meetings, when they were internal meetings, they asked for certain things, and I won't identify who, but then externally, they said, "Oh, no, no, we didn't ask for that." So, I think there needs to be a unified approach in the way in which we go about the work of reducing violence in CRHA properties.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Hi, Chief Brackney. Thank you. I don't know if this is the form for which to go back and forth. Like I said, that's just not my style, but I think that I'll speak from the eye for today. I think that I was under the impression that the ask was for the Police Department to, you know, meet regularly with CRHA and let them know when things are going down on the properties and making sure that was open. I thought the ask was for the policing to be equitable to like the rest of the community. I don't, I will say comfortably, I don't know if that FAR was one, was thinking that it would be an increase. Well, I think that, so that is my thoughts on that, and I will continue to marinate on it and circle back with my team.
Yeah, when you think about equity to communities, here's what, that's a very different response than addressing violence that is currently escalating, right? When I think about equity in the communities, and, you know, everyone has said they want to be policed on, you know, South First Street, the way you do on Park, right, the way you do on Greenbrier and things of that nature. And my response is, what we're asking for is, there's the same dignity and respect and protection provided to the communities, but there are different tools we have to use to address different crimes that are going on in the communities, and we do have to acknowledge that as a community. What is happening has to be addressed, and we have to use the tools to address those specific uptick in violence, the shootings, and the number of guns that are flowing through certain communities. And that provides a little clarity.
It does, and I, and I love, and I love and appreciate the idea of uniformity and as far as, as far as approach, but I think what we always wonder as we continue to serve the community, if we sign a letter that that says we cosigns, and to be clear to the public, we have not signed anything, there is no letter quite yet. I just wonder, if anything goes down on CPD's watch, how would that look like for us? And you don't have to answer that question. It's meant to be-
So, the way, what we're saying is, is that we will still police the way that we police, right? We use certain techniques. There's presence, there's technology, there's investigative tools. We've also had our physical security specialists do an assessment of where the vulnerabilities are around the physical structures that also may allow for increases in crime, and if we change certain things, it will decrease the patterns and the traffics of crime and things of that nature. So, I think they're separate and distinct things. Regardless, I mean, there's communities that hire our officers as off-duty details, right? Just because you hire them and say, we want them here, doesn't mean you are now responsible for their behaviors. They, we are always responsible. They are employed by Charlottesville Police Department, performing additional services in that community. So for me, it's not how they're going to be regulated. It's, are we going to say as a community externally facing that we have a problem? And we must acknowledge there is one and that collaboratively, we are all going to work to solve that problem. And here's one of the tools or one of the avenues in which we're gonna do that.
I don't have any more thoughts at this moment, but like I said, I'll marinate on it, Chief Brackney, and go back to my team and always go back to the residents. I think that this is a multifaceted issue, which I think it's gonna have multifaceted solutions. But I appreciate hearing that you, as much as possible, want to work together and with the community to do what's best for them, to keep them safe. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. And I'm sure we'll talk offline.
I mean, I'm down. He's gonna find me.
No, I'm easier.
That I believe. Thanks, y'all.
I'll just chime in as someone who is having a hard time, all of you know this, with the shift. Because I've been that person that has been saying for years, can we police our neighborhoods like we police other neighborhoods in the city, Park Street, Greenbrier? And so this is hard for me. And, you know, even when the idea of a letter came up, even before that, in the discussion with the increase, you know, just presence, I'm still struggling with. But I do know that maybe some of the things that I thought were possible, I still hope those things are possible, but I don't think we are, you know, right at a, at a space right now where we can make them, them work the way we need to, to respond to everything that's going on in the community. And I'm always one to not even, even if those numbers increase, like arrest numbers and, you know, increased police presence typically leads to an increase in arrests. I'm still on the side of trying to fight for people to make sure that they are treated fairly throughout the system. It's just a really challenging dynamic. But I know we're at a space where we know what time of year it is. We don't have a lot of options. And if we are going to save during this season, that, and I mean season that we're in, for however long that lasts, that our best option is utilizing CPD there, then we just need to be clear on that and what that ask is. Because it's costing quite a bit. And I think that's what, as a city, and I talked to some of you about this earlier, we have to look at the budgetary impact. We have to defend that budget because people are asking for, I figure out ways to decrease a budget that we are asking, you know, that we are going to be increasing. And so that's going to be a topic of conversation. But I also, as I was thinking about this earlier, in the future, when maybe there are other people in these positions, it also creates an avenue for, in the past, police have just come into the community and policed how they want. I think creating this kind of partnership, having it in writing, also gives an example for what future policing looks like if it's needed. And hopefully that we can prevent some of the harm by organizations like CRHA FAR being able to say, hey, this is what we did in 2021 and we want to follow a model similar to that when we have people with common goals. Because in the meeting that we had with Mr. Sales, maybe two months ago now, or maybe not, two months ago, anyway, at some point, I talked about the policing we witnessed in the 80s and 90s. And we don't want to go back to that. No one wants to go back to that. And we should never want to return to that in the future. And there are a lot of conversations going on about how necessary the police are. And we don't want to shift from a defund to police being necessary. I think what we are all hopefully trying to say is that right now, we want to keep our families safe. And this is the best route to do that at this time. And everyone be able to have some input on, you know, what things are occurring when there's this increased presence.
Thank you. I agree about the setting some kind of example for partnership. And that may change over time, but at least having, keeping a relationship up where the parties are all talking and talking about how to protect families is, is, I think, a really strong one. You know, the question is how that, you know, might evolve over time. It sounds like this is kind of a now thing, like short-term, we need to figure this out now. But the long-term is all of these other partnerships and backup and, you know, the things that cause people to be involved in these crimes in the first place, which is, you know, a longer-term, ongoing, long-term. Ms. Goldblatt, did you have any thoughts from what you've been hearing?
So this isn't necessarily a question or a comment, Chief Brackney. I do think that one of the other pieces that needs to be part of a short-term plan is mental health services. Is I think for a lot of residents, a heavy police presence will itself be triggering. And I don't want to see residents caught up, I don't think anyone wants to see residents caught up in that. And so I think, I saw in the notes from last time that Mr. Sales says that they've worked out an arrangement with Region 10, where they will provide like immediate services the following day after some sort of an event. But I think we need to have on the short-term, community partnership agreements with people providing mental health services. Because I don't think, I think those two things have to go hand in hand. We can't have one without the other.
Laura, I agree with you. These are short-term. I just also want us to be understanding of also, when we think about triggering events, when you're talking about the level of violence, shots fired going on 24 hours a day or seven days a week, that should be a triggering event for all of us, right? As we're starting to think about what are those root causes and indicators of violence, what I can say is that hopefully the last three weekends that we've been in these spaces so far, there have been no shootings because we have had such a heavy presence in the last three weekends. But is, that is not a sustainable model and should not be a sustainable model for any of us. I'm having to modify our budget to try and do that, to make sure that I can support it. It is not cheap by any stretch of the imagination. I'm sure someone listening will then FOIA me to ask how much that we've spent every weekend for the last three weekends. And we are planning on doing this definitely for a few more. I won't broadcast completely what we're doing. But we are doing this as well. And then maybe there's models where we do it sporadically if we can't do it, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight weekends in a row. That there's ways that we work this out differently on overtime as well. But I can appreciate that there should be a mental health component. I would also wish that we, that we should understand and appreciate that police presence isn't the only thing that should or are triggering events in our communities. It would seem to me the reasons that we're getting called there should be triggering events for our communities as well. And I'm sure they are. I come from those communities and grew up in those communities as well.
And I just wanted to, and again, I'm in the listening mode, so I just want to make sure that I heard you, Chief Brackney. Are you citing the increased police violence as a reason there's been no violence over the past three weeks? I just want to make sure I understood that clearly.
Police presence. No, we've not had increased police violence. So let me correct the record for that one. No. So we've had, in these areas, we've had police complete saturation in those areas. Since they're already in the past, every Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, starting at 8:00 at night till 5:00 in the morning, we've had four officers dedicated to South First, West Haven and Sixth, Sixth and a half Streets. So right in those areas, and we've not had any shootings in three weeks. And that is a, a, yeah. Police presence does make a difference. We also know the police presence will then, people will find a different place to go and it will find another pathway. So we have to be careful that we don't push it into another community or another area that we get to the root causes of it to start.
I, okay. Thank you so much for sharing your perspective. I appreciate that. I know this isn't the meeting for this, but I also want to throw in there, as we're talking about community involvement, I'm gonna throw in a plug for the PCRB. I hope that we're considering on that end to getting community members involved with the PCRB that can potentially work hand in hand about what that, what that might look like. So that we can, we're potentially working with them on the front end, but on the back end, having an accountability system with that as well.
So you're saying for the PCRB to help with reducing violence in the community? I think any avenue you use for any community group to reduce violence in the communities, sure, go for it. If you think that's a vehicle that could be successful, we should leverage whatever we have.
Well, thank you for coming on. I know we've been setting up meetings and I know they have been different. Like I wasn't at the last meeting with the chief and her staff and Mr. Sales. And I don't even know if any of the FAR members were at that meeting. But I just wanted to have the, an opportunity just to answer, you know, to ask any questions and answer them during this update. So that we can try to get to whatever the resolution is.
So if there's nothing else from me, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. It's good seeing some of you. I haven't seen you in a while, Miss Joy or Lisa. Some of you have your pictures up, haven't seen you in a minute. Be well.
All right, thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, in terms of the board, should this be followed with, I know Mr. Sales is gonna be late to our meeting tonight, but it sounds like Mr. Sales, Ms. Goldblatt, those who have been going to these meetings will continue to work on whether we need this letter and what the letter says, and with FAR, obviously. Okay, Ms. Lynn Matthews, there's, the next piece is discussion of creating a nonprofit. And I don't know if you, I assume you're the one that is gonna talk about this.
Yes.
Hey.
All right, good evening, everyone. Following up on one of our annual plan goals, tonight the board has a resolution authorizing the creation of a nonprofit. And before we get to that, I wanted to share some information regarding the process with you all. All right, as we're, tonight, we're gonna be working on a resolution to authorize the creation of this new entity, which is also subject to city council approval. After creation of the new entity has been authorized by the board and approved by city council, we'll need to name it. And the way we do that, you know, is open, it could be the board names its staff. We could have a resident contest, but I definitely want to get people thinking about that. Following that, we will check with the state corporation commission and most likely our attorney will be doing this for us. And we'll make sure that the name is available. And then we'll prepare and file articles of organization and operating agreement. It's gonna be really important at that point that we adopt a conflict of interest policy. And it's pretty standard. Some of you might have already done this with other boards that you've been on with nonprofits. It's very similar to the one we have as well. It's just requiring, if you have a conflict, that you disclose it. If we're going over, say, a property that maybe you have some vested interest in, that that's brought up. It's to prohibit interested board members from voting on any matter in which there is a conflict. And it'll be something that we will reference and attach a copy to, you know, any unanimous consent adopting it, and then also go with our application. Financial data is gonna be really important when applying for this status. As a new entity, we'll have to provide projections of likely income and expenses. And a lot of this is gonna have to be projected. So we're gonna be spending a lot of time thinking about that. It'll be like the fair market value for providing any services, value of any facilities that are gonna be used for this, amounts expended, this might be for grant writing, and professional fees. Fundraising is gonna be kind of an exciting part of this. But one of the major responsibilities will also be to the board with that as well. Our board hasn't traditionally been a fundraising board, and this would be a shift. And it'll be something that we'll be looking at with having a strategic plan. Some things to think about is, who will be overseeing our fundraising efforts? Would it be the board chair or ED or a designee of our executive director? How will our fundraising be conducted? Will it be primarily going after grants? Will we have online? Will we have events around redevelopment and other areas? And, or it might be a combination of all of these things. We're also gonna need to have some new plans in place. Currently, I know we're, the Housing Authority Board will be overseeing and the executive director will designate staff. And we'll have, as we talked, for a budget for anticipated compensation of any of the staff that are involved in this process. There's gonna be a lot of information gathering going on. We're gonna be seeking that nonprofit tax-exempt status. And as well as that, we're gonna be looking at a lot of detailed, specific information. And the first part of that process is tonight, I'm hoping for some feedback on the board, from the board. Does the board have any ideas of how they'd like us to go about finding a name for the nonprofit?
I like the idea of having residents. That would be great.
Great. That's something I can help work on. Anyone else?
I have a question. So the Charlottesville Community Development Corporation, is that what it's, no. I can't remember what it's called, but the CCDC. That exists. So what would be the diff, I mean, is this, this seems like it's primarily fundraising. Do we, do we need this or can we combine it with the CCDC?
The CCDC is not a nonprofit. It is not a 501(c)(3).
Okay, gotcha.
And if people have other thoughts on that, please reach out.
A question we had about the mission of the nonprofit.
Yes, we're gonna definitely, this is all part of organizing that. We're gonna be needing to set up mission. We're gonna be talking about activities that will be done by the nonprofit and descriptions for that will need to be part of this application. So it'll, it'll really require some in-depth thought about the aim of this new venture for us.
So could you talk a little bit about the, how this made it into the annual plan and why? That may be helpful. That may be helpful.
Yeah, um, let me get out of this real quick. A big reason this became part of the annual plan is around services. It was really interesting, two weeks ago, we had a resident services meeting where everyone wanted to talk about safety concerns. And that night, we had a safety committee meeting where everyone wanted to talk about the need for services. And the two are, you know, completely tied together. And what I have here are just a few examples of resident service programs that we have been asked for just in the past couple of months. Can everyone see that okay? And in order to do a lot of these things, you know, we need to have funds, especially to do it well. So we've talked to a lot of other housing authorities that, in some cases, have multiple nonprofits. I was recently talking to Dolores about Portsmouth. They even have one for their FSS program. So this may be just the beginning, but it is a beginning to start looking at ways to invest in having programs for our residents.
And can you talk a little bit about why CRHA can't fulfill that need at this time?
Sure, we, I mean, we have a very tight budget right now. We, there was a time when the Housing Authority had access to more funding through various sources for services. We also, there were more notices of federal funding NOFAs through HUD for programs this year where, you know, waiting and waiting and hoping for family self-sufficiency, it was only open for renewal for agencies who previously had the program. There's not a lot of resources out there, and a lot of the grants that we're finding require a 501(c)(3) status.
So you all could hire at this point under CRHA, if there was funding under CRHA, but you can't fundraise to get the funding to hire?
And it's hard to ask donors to donate funds when we can't give them that letter, being a nonprofit. We are tax exempt, but we're still a quasi-government organization.
I think whenever, whenever we were talking about the annual plan, maybe it was also just to, I shouldn't say compete, because everyone is doing, you know, good work. We have a lot of nonprofits in Charlottesville. But I think when people see a list and they're thinking about who to donate to, they don't necessarily think about the CRHA, because it's seen as, you know, funded by the government. So to kind of separate, or have a way for people to be able to donate. For example, I work for UVA, and every year, we get a little card, and we can take some deduction out of our salary to to donate to different nonprofits, and you get this huge list, you know, and they're all great, but yeah, there's no like, you know, public housing checkmark on there, because, I guess, just because we're not a nonprofit. So it just gives a vehicle for another vehicle to bring in money.
I think a plus there also is the, I mean, depending on what the focal point becomes initially, the comments, I think, that Commissioner Goldblatt was making at the beginning of the meeting about request for services, mental health services specifically, and you know, who can, you know, people go to, and if the nonprofit is able to hire someone that meets the standards that, you know, the families deserve and are seeking in the communities. That's something that I just thought about while you were talking through. Not that that would be the starting point, you know, what the nonprofit would initially focus on, but with the understanding that no matter where you start, then services can expand under that umbrella in some way.
That's absolutely right. When I worked for the Housing Authority about 15 years ago, we used to have grants that we would give out each year under resident services, and we would have a panel of residents. Joy was part of that as well, and people would put in applications for services that had been requested. And we would vote on how that funding would be utilized. That was how Harold Foley's after-school program was funded every year, and a lot of other resident, you know, initiated activities. I wonder, Joy, if you had any thoughts you wanted to share on just that whole process?
We had, we also had the church who, what was the name? I can't think of the name of the church up UVA. St. Paul's and another church was helped to help us fund, so you had some private dollars that was also going into having the after-school program, but it was just strictly for the after-school program.
In that situation, is the only thing that didn't happen that could happen here was that the donors were able to receive donation letter, or did they donate to another nonprofit that was used as a fiscal agent? How did that work?
VOP was the fiscal agent. And so, um, the Westminster Presbyterian Church, I'm sorry. They had a grant cycle, I think, that you applied for, and it went through VOP, which paid for Harold's position at the time, and I think CRHA contributed also from one of those grants. So if there was a nonprofit under CRHA, the money could have went straight to CRHA to pay for that service and whoever they hire.
So Kathleen, for the resolution, we're just, we are just voting to begin the process, but would, I'm wondering, in terms of the mission, I don't, it seems like maybe the mission should come before the process, or the, you know, to starting it, or is the process gonna be going slowly enough that we can talk about the mission, you know, as we're also applying for these, for the status of nonprofit?
Yes, there's gonna be a lot of paperwork that's gonna be part of the application. This is just authorizing that we can initiate this process and have our attorney assist us as well. All of that information I was talking about earlier is gonna be some of the information gathering we do. And it will be this board that will be overseeing it, so, and you will be working on the mission.
I wanna go back to my favorite question that I asked. What are the localities that have a nonprofit? Or is there a framework out there to guide us in this direction? So we can look at what other localities may be doing in this realm, and then, again, what are they doing right, and what can we do differently to make it better? I don't like reinventing the wheel anytime we don't have to.
Yeah, I'd like to try to invite Dolores back to our next board meeting, so she can talk about how, not only have they created one nonprofit, but several, and how it's made it possible for them to invest in residence by doing that. So I can try to get her on the agenda for our next board meeting.
So that may be the topic for that work session we were about to not, or we didn't really know what was gonna be on that topic.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Someone has their hand raised. And I'm okay, you know, taking questions now, if that's okay. Mr. Rice, can you unmute?
So we wanna hold a public comment right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that if there's just a quick question. Otherwise, we can wait till the end. Let's see what she has to say.
Ms. Quinn, you are on with the board.
And Ms. Quinn, I don't know if you know how to unmute. I believe you pressed star six.
Sorry, I had forgotten I raised my hand. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, my least favorite question, well. As a potential donor, I think it's imperative that you have a clear, what will we do with this funding before you get too far down the organization line? You know, I heard a whole bunch of services. I saw services that are available elsewhere. Is there some reason, you know, really hone in on how are you going to accomplish the mission? I also know from one experience setting up nonprofits, though, the tax deductibility is probably not as a driving incentive for many people. I think maybe for the smaller donors, but you know, so few people deduct itemized taxes anyway. But I do think it's an interesting idea to explore. I would like to add one other support item. That is, examine more ways that CRHA can support the NOAs in town, naturally occurring affordable housing landlords. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So maybe if we were to, and we'll check with Mr. Sales about the work session, but if we wanna work more on the mission for this nonprofit, we could do it at the next work session, and maybe we just do that, you know, by ourselves. I'm thinking it's also from, or a couple of the retreats we had with the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, we're really good at helping people talk about mission. And so that could be, we could see if they, one of them could attend, or if that's a separate, you know, later down the line, but that, that could be a good way to help us facilitate that discussion. Okay, so we do have a resolution in front of us to start.
More question.
Yes, go, go.
The, um, is this similar to what, the request that'll come before council? Because it says just in one, subject to approval. So will it just be similar to the CCDC?
Yes, it'll be very similar.
Okay.
In order for us to create another entity.
Okay. All right. That was my last question.
So, um, the resolution we have before us is a resolution authorizing the creation by the, by Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority of a nonprofit corporation or other entities to facilitate development efforts in the city of Charlottesville. And should I read? Or read down through it, read the whole thing since we're online? And again, this is just to start the process. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the authority has determined that it is appropriate to participate in various development, redevelopment, educational, and community service activities that further the mission of the authority and enhance the quality of life for the residents of the city of Charlottesville. Whereas pursuant to section thirty-six dash nineteen twelve of the Virginia Housing Authority's law, chapter one, Title Thirty-Six Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty, as amended, the authority with the approval of the local governing body is authorized to form corporations, partnerships, limited liability companies, and other legal entities as combinations thereof. Whereas participation of the authority in the project may require the creation of one or more legal entities, including but not limited to a nonprofit corporation, to oversee activities related to the project. And whereas the authority plans to apply to the Internal Revenue Service to obtain tax-exempt status under the Internal Revenue Code for such entity once created. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority as follows. Number one, subject to the approval of City Council, Charlottesville City Council, the formation by the authority of a nonprofit corporation or such other entities as may be necessary or desired to facilitate the participation of the authority in planning, developing, and supporting the project is hereby authorized and approved. Number two, the executive director or his designee is hereby authorized to prepare, execute, and submit the necessary application to the IRS to request tax-exempt status under the code for such, for any such entity. Number three, the executive director or his designee is hereby authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements, instruments, and other documents as may be necessary or desirable to consummate the transactions completed, contemplated by this resolution, and to take such other action as he may deem necessary or desirable to carry out the intent of this resolution. Number four, all actions heretofore taken by the executive director and other officers of the authority in connection with the transactions completed by, contemplated by this resolution are hereby approved, adopted, ratified, and confirmed in all respects. Do we have a motion to approve, oh, number five, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution? Which sounds like it's moving forward with the creation of the nonprofit, but not yet all of the details.
Or I think, so we would have to work on the details as we're creating versus creating without the details. Dr. Henry, you're muted.
I think you usually fill in the details after you have an accepted charter. You know, because we can't spell out everything we plan to do, and my sense was that this process was initiated because of the housing being in, under review, and therefore lacking funds needed to do things that need to be done, said as related to crisis and other type of issues that are going on. And that was the whole idea of having this. So I think you would fill in the type of programs and other things that you might wanna do with this later, you know, because you have some general idea of what the purpose of the nonprofit is.
Yeah, no, when you submit, from my understanding of nonprofits, when you submit the documentations to this, you know, to incorporate you know, to incorporate it, you have to at least have a starting point for that. So I, but I think that's what Kathleen is saying. That we are going to be working on that over. This is just saying that we're kind of in agreement that we can move forward with this. And then they are saying that the board, the staff, the family.
Residents.
Yeah, all will be participating as we pull this together.
That's correct.
And offering real solutions. Yeah, it's wait till if they, I mean, the Democrats fight like hell. If they do.
Ms. Slaughter?
I I I I motion to approve it.
There's second?
I second the motion.
Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote and make sure that we set up our, if Mr. Sales didn't have something else in mind, let's follow up with the work session while it's fresh in our mind and start hashing out some of the details. Ms. Dean, can you do a roll call vote?
Chair Richter?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Green?
Working a national reckoning on police violence against black people. We'll have special coverage tomorrow.
Commissioner Lisa Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Matty Green? Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughter?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Right, the resolution passed. All right, so we have another resolution in front of us. And a few people that can to can speak to it. The next resolution comes from the redevelopment committee. And the redevelopment committee has been around for at least five years and maybe it's someone else with a better memory can can voice when it actually started. But the redevelopment, because of all of the work that the board oversees and that CRHA does, redevelopment is sort of like a whole other layer of work on top of that, on top of the normal operations of CRHA. And so to get that going, this redevelopment committee was formed. And they had voting members and still do, they were different at that time, that would prioritize where to start on redevelopment. So we did have a resolution that had prioritized Crescent Halls as one of the first, you know, physical buildings that needed renovation, or at that time, we didn't know if it would be renovation. And identified the South First Street Ball Field as the first vacant lot to get additional units. So this resolution now comes after much discussion of what's next. It's hard to believe there is a what's next with everything going on, but I, but the way that the tax credits work, where there's an application once a year, the momentum that we're on with, working with partners and learning from resident engagement and resident led redevelopment, I think we want to build on all of that momentum. We don't want to let this, you know, anything pause or stop at this time. So this resolution is coming to us about the next steps. And I'm not sure, Ms. Edwards, would you like to continue? I know Farr was going to speak to this as well.
I'm actually gonna pivot this to Brandon. I don't have any further comment. I just hope that the resolution passes.
Yeah, is Brandon able to speak? Do we need to? Let's see, Mr. Rice, can you move Brandon over or allow him to speak?
Sure, he has his hand up.
Thank you.
Brandon, you're on with the commission.
Great. Good evening again, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Similar to what Shelby just said, I think we're, you know, want to express our support for moving ahead. I think it's also a perfect opportunity for the board to discuss some of your goals as a board and or as individual commissioners as pertains to redevelopment on the whole and what that means. So when it comes to West Haven, there's been a lot of angst in the public housing community and from advocates of why, why wasn't West Haven first? And there's quite a few reasons. But it doesn't let anybody off the hook. What it does is make us all recognize that this process takes a long period of time and any moment longer that we wait on West Haven is years of residents experiencing a not fulfilling quality of life. And it's also, you know, avoiding opportunities for advancement and improving the Charlottesville community as a whole and bringing about amends for housing authorities role in urban renewal at care and at Vinegar Hill and Hartman's Mill. So it's time and it's an historic moment to begin that process. And West Haven is complex and the history behind it and the residents living there and sort of our present day issues with safety, which are similar at Sixth Street. To take making sure we have a full on planning process that is the most spectacular in the nation and the nation is watching. And I think, you know, I'm happy to see the board is ready to move forward with this. Similar with Sixth Street, it is complex and, you know, the idea floated is let's start with a phase one for Sixth Street. Create a little bit of wiggle room. We can do that and continue to plan for something spectacular. And I think we're all committed to making that happen. We're all committed to moving this forward. What this resolution doesn't do, and which may be our next steps, is address the scattered sites and single family homes. All of them have been very patient. They've seen a vacancy issue reduced through a lot of hard work from the Housing Authority, but that's been through a lot of patience of a lot of residents wondering when it's their turn to experience a better quality of life. So as we move this forward, it is my sincere hope, and I think the sincere hope of the Farr Board of Directors, that we can begin a similar all out historic effort on the parallel track. I know steps are being made forward, but I think we're all very interested in how can we sort of codify that and make it spectacular. So with that, and we hope you pass the resolution, Farr wants to be a partner in this process. I think CRHA through its recent redevelopment efforts is learning and getting better and able to take on more responsibility for development of affordable housing and improving the community and hoping y'all will want to see that happen.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we, the redevelopment is advising, we move forward with, there's a vacant piece of land on Sixth Street, the corner of Monticello and Sixth Street. And if we're able to build units there, it would, the wiggle room that Mr. Collins referred to would be, there would be new units available for when we move on to West Haven, when residents would need to relocate during that redevelopment period. So similarly to the the South First Street, new units will help when South First Street Phase Two happens. So again, building on a vacant lot to give us some units and then moving forward with a much larger redevelopment effort at West Haven. That also just to mention the timeline and planning that is going to be neat. I mean, the timeline would be to do the vacant lot first to have those units and to spend a couple of years working with the West Haven community to really hash out what should have, what should and could happen there. So that if anyone's worried about the the resolution, put it pushing those two together, that means, that doesn't mean that their timeline is intertwined. Sixth Street would happen faster and sooner and West Haven would have a longer period to really, you know, hash out what what should happen there. So I'm just wanted to add that. I do think it's essential to move forward because for many reasons, politically, but also that the city is becoming increasingly, increasingly difficult for people to live in. You know, just every day it's shocking to see, to see these houses go on the market for extraordinary prices. So I mean, that's, that's, you know, for all of us working on affordable housing, but it would be great to keep this going.
And I'll just, I'll chime in there. I think it's you know, very important. I, this is one of the things that excited me about, you know, what are some reasons that you maybe stay in this kind of work? I look forward to, you know, continuing the progress that we're, you know, making and you know, with in my position at the city, just making sure that the city understands, you know, that we have, you know, that the, that we, that our families deserve it and that we owe it. And so I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, that being present to make sure the conversations continue to go in that direction was, I think it's so important, but this are you saying? Okay. No, but this is really, you know, exciting, you know, work and the vacant development on Sixth Street, planning to the phase two of Sixth Street, because that's ultimately what it will become. But at the same time, letting families know who are in the development that was created first, that because there's not, you know, necessarily the available land that's available at South First Street, Sixth Street, that that's why the decisions were made for you to have somewhere to go and that, you know, to prevent displacement as much as possible and that that's important because, you know, there are some developments in town. I'm not going to talk about them. But they didn't necessarily prevent the displacement. Every family that started out at the beginning of those developments, they are not the families that are still there. And we want to make sure in this community that we know people can afford, that they are somewhere for them, you know, to be while the units are being developed and that that's very important to make sure that we don't push anyone out.
So what I would like, I agree with you, Commissioner Walker, Mayor Walker, that it's important for the rest of the other sites to know. I was on at least two sites last week. And the conversations were, well, we want, we would like to live in nice things too and win. And so I've been saying, and I hope that the board can address this very soon, is about the parallel track also of redevelopment. Because I think people are willing to wait for their turn as long as they know when their turn is coming up, whether it is, you know, twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six. However, while they're waiting, they do want things fixed in their unit and, and it's still livable. And so I don't want us to just, I would hope that that gets on the radar pretty soon also. In a resolution, whatever you want, however you want to do it, that we also, and we have to do it for her, right? Because even though we're doing redevelopment, if we're not maintaining our remaining units and they're failing, we may not be able to do redevelopment going forward. So I think that's just something I just want to make sure that I put on your hearts that you can't leave, you cannot leave the parallel track of fixing up the other units. Also. And folks want to know their, I think, I just letting people know why I think it's important. This, what I was saying, what Mayor Walker said is why, why you had to go with Crescent Halls first, why you had to go with the Ball Field? Why we have to now go to Sixth Street and just let people know that, you know, because we don't want to lose, we don't want people to be displaced or to give them a voucher where they go out and they cannot find anything and then they're they're just, they become homeless. We don't want anybody to be homeless in this process. I think people respect that. And I think we just need to be able to tell people that. And I think folks are just waiting to hear, you know, when is their turn? What you're going to do in the meantime to fix up temporarily, fix up what, you know, we, they're living in.
Okay, so I'm hearing, you know, for redevelopment committee to work on both a more specific plan and timeline for the parallel track and just for redevelopment overall, so people see, residents can better see where their sites fit in the larger plan. And we've been hoping to do that all along, I think. I think we just get bogged down in the next, you know, in getting the projects done, but that'll be a goal to start looking, now that this decision may be made, we can start to have a longer term picture for everyone. Anyway, should I read the resolution? Okay, I'll go ahead and read it. This is CRHA Resolution fourteen twenty-six, a resolution adopting the recommendation of the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority Redevelopment Committee to include redevelopment of certain CRHA properties. Whereas the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority is committed to the provision of affordable quality housing for all residents. And whereas the CRHA Redevelopment Committee has been charged with making recommendations to the CRHA Board of Commissioners concerning redevelopment planning and implementation matters. And whereas the CRHA Redevelopment Committee recognizes that not all CRHA communities will be able to be redeveloped at the same time. And whereas the best near term option for improvement of some CRHA communities may be redevelopment. Therefore, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the CRHA Redevelopment Committee, the Board of Commissioners of the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority does hereby direct and charge the CRHA Redevelopment Committee to begin immediate resident engagement in order to begin the redevelopment of the Sixth Street property vacant land and to get a tax credit application in by March two thousand twenty-two. And sort of in parallel to this, began engagement of the Sixth Street and West Haven community in order to develop a resident led decision making process to redevelop all of West Haven and all of Sixth Street.
A move for approval?
I second.
Great. Ms. Dean, could you do the roll call, please?
Chair Richter?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Police are highly discouraging.
Commissioner Lisa Green.
Yes.
Mr. Matty Green. Dr. Henry. Dr. Henry. You're muted.
Abstain.
Commissioner Slaughter.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Great. Resolution passes. Does anyone need a five minute break or should we move ahead with? I think we'll move ahead with the redevelopment update because Mr. Sales isn't with us yet. Right, we'll just keep going, but shout out if you need a little break.
Five minutes.
What?
Could we take five minutes?
Yeah, yeah. Let's take a five minute break at 7:40. We'll hear the redevelopment update. Okay, let's give everyone maybe another minute to get back on. Okay, so, um, we will continue with the redevelopment update by Ms. Glenn Matthews. And we'll see if Mr. Sales joins us. We'll do his update. And we'll just see. Okay. Ms. Glenn Matthews, would you like to go ahead?
Hello, everyone. We've been doing a lot of growing as we have started active redevelopment. A lot of shiftings happen too, as we learn more. We have Ms. Edwards and I have been out at the sites with hard hats and vests. We've had Ms. Johnson out at sites in hard hat and vest doing labor with inspections. We've also been looking at the redevelopment committee and seeing how that committee needs to grow. And we had some proposed changes with that. We're looking at having an admin committee with the voting members. And a CRHA redevelopment staff person as a secretary. This group would start working on getting more process in place, like how voting will work and be recorded. Working on the timing of meetings, location. And improving record keeping is a really big one and also preparing the agenda. So we make sure we're keeping everything on track with our timelines. With multiple projects and a lot of future planning happening as well as a sustainability study, we felt this would be really important to get placed sooner rather than later. We're also just looking at the committee, how it's compromised and we're looking at having a representative from the city in attendance, but not as a voting member. We'd also been having conversations about someone from NDS being part of that and working on relationship building and just helping educate the group on challenges so we can address them early. We also have Mr. Jeff Meyer here with us tonight, who's going to share some updates with us. Are you ready, Jeff?
Updates, okay. And I, I think you're talking about updates with financing for the next steps. Okay.
Yes.
Maybe, I'm not sure how much folks are aware that we have submitted a tax credit application in this past March for additional funding for South First Phase One. And we also, this past March, submitted applications to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for additional financing for both South First Phase One and Crescent Halls. We're hopeful in all cases that we're going to receive the additional funding and of course, the funding is necessary because the cost of doing both of those projects grew beyond the funding packages that we had originally prepared for them. We're, we are also prepared to work with the redevelopment committee and FAR and other groups after tonight's vote to prepare an application for next March for for Sixth Street as well. And as far as South First Phase Two is concerned, we are still in the process of receiving our demolition and disposition approval from HUD. We've been working through that with some consultants. And we have to apply for mixed finance approval from HUD as well. We anticipate to be done with both of those processes in the fall. And we'll be ready to to complete the financial package for South First Phase Two and be able to move it along. Hopefully to a close in the spring of 2022 so that we can begin construction, construction shortly thereafter in early summer. At a time when we're able to move residents from South First, the current South First public housing development to the new South First Phase One. We'll begin moving residents off that site so that we can begin construction on that site. And that's all I have right now. But I welcome any questions.
Okay, questions? For Mr. Meyer, thank you for doing all of that work. It's amazing how much costs went up through COVID or continues to go up apparently. Ms. Glenn Matthews, do you want to keep going on the, the, your update with relocation? I'm looking through the report that you wrote. Yeah. Maybe she stepped away.
Sorry. Unmuted. Were you just wanting me to kind of go over the report or?
I just didn't know if you wanted to mention anything else. Relocation, maybe because Crescent Halls is in process. I mean, that's the most crucial piece of Crescent.
Phase one of relocation at Crescent Halls is now complete. The eighth and seventh floor have been relocated and work is actively happening on the eighth floor and some of the preliminary work is happening on the seventh floor. We've also been working really hard with the tenant association at Crescent Halls, who have been amazing in getting everything out of the first floor. So residents only have access now to the elevator and mailbox area. And the rest of the first floor is now undergoing renovation as well. They needed to access the sprinkler system, some things right away. So it was important that we got everything out of there. There's been a lot of creativity by the Resident Association as to how to do things. And we got a storage unit out in the parking lot to put some of the items from their kitchen in there and and we'll continue to work closely with them on ideas as we move vending machines and various things around in order to still keep things as accessible as we can. We have been having a lot of meetings about Phase Two. Every other Sunday, there's a meeting with BRW Architects and the resident planners and also the redevelopment committee, there's been kind of an offshoot that's been meeting just about Phase Two to make sure we keep everything on track. And it's been really helpful. And we see ourselves starting a similar committee for Sixth Street now that that's been approved. And, and as I said before, we're really excited to get an admin committee up and running as part of the redevelopment committee to have a lot more process in place and improve our record keeping. And that is all I have for tonight.
Great. Did you want feedback on the admin committee or?
Sure.
Well, I, I don't necessarily have any. I think it's a good idea. I didn't know if any, if you were looking for people to volunteer or just that, just sort of letting us know that was happening.
Yeah, we were looking at that being composed of the voting members of the committee with the CRHA staff, the redevelopment project manager being the secretary for the group. And if the board, you know, had concerns with that, please let us know or recommendations.
Is there a head of redevelopment now?
There's currently two chairs, Betsy and Nikaya are the chairs and the we don't currently have a redevelopment project manager. So I've been standing in as a secretary.
And I do think, I'm sorry, good evening, Commissioner. I do think we do need guidance from the commissioners on one of the, well, I think both of those items. The points of first removing the voting member of the city and adding a resident from Sixth Street as a voting member. And then the guidance on the admin committee. Because that, that committee will also be doing work. And will be a subgroup of the main committee. So both of those items, I think we need guidance from the commissioners on.
I agree with what you proposed as the makeup of the voting. I think it was the voting. Now I'm confused. There's the voting and the admin group. Is that one in the same?
The admin group is going to be made up of the voting members.
Okay.
But we're asking to amend the voting members of the redevelopment committee to remove the city as a voting member and add a resident from Sixth Street as a voting member. We still want to have the city participation. And I think we, we are aiming to have more participation from NDS. And specifically, we're asking for Alex to be really involved or to be more involved, to be more involved in the process, just because he has so much knowledge when it comes to the site plan process, the planning zoning process, that he could really help us out on that end. Which is where we've come into, run into some hurdles now.
Um, so I, I like this. My only question is, other than like potentially hurt feelings, is there any, it seems like there's, I see a lot of benefits to adding a Sixth Street resident as a voting member, but is there a downside to taking someone from the city off as a voting member?
I, I, I actually like them as a almost in the advisory role because since it is CRHA property and projects, we totally need their advice, but yet I don't know that they should be voting on, you know, what we're doing next necessarily. That's just my feeling. But I think it's great to involve neighborhood. But I think it's great to involve Neighborhood Development Service, like, you know, invite them to the meetings and get their feedback and have them as part of the general whole committee.
Only part I would say about that is without the city being a voting member, they're not, I'm not sure they're vested. What I'm trying to say there is, if you're on a, if you're on a committee and you have to vote, then you're accountable to the folks that you come back and talk to. So if we're having trouble getting things through NDS, let's say, Alex, man, you voted on this. Why is it, you know, what's the problem? Because there are problems getting things through NDS.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I kind of worry about a problem of an outside role of the community over public housing residents.
From adding another, you mean, can you say more about?
From adding the neighborhood component. Because the neighborhood doesn't share the same idea of redevelopment that public housing residents share. The same can be true if the council changes radically from its current configuration. So those things kind of scare me as a resident. I just wanted to point that out.
Hey, Dr. Henry, the recommendation is a resident from the Sixth Street community that live in the public housing community join the redevelopment committee, not an outside resident that doesn't live.
No, 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 I didn't say an outside resident. I'm talking about somebody from the neighborhood group. Would they be a voting member?
We're talking.
Would Alex's group be a voting member?
Oh, you're talking about NDS?
Yes.
In our recommendation, no.
Okay. And I'm sure your, you know, position with regard to the council not having a vote, you know, I would not mind particular what we have now. But I mean, like I said, things can change radically.
So I think the reason that we've been talking about an NDS representative is to have the expertise there and someone who some of the issues that we ran into, I think at both, yeah, Crescent Halls and Phase One of South First Street that we would kind, since we're moving on with Phase Two, have moved on and Sixth Street, that it'll be helpful for that person. And I don't know necessarily if they have to be voting or non-voting. I think, but I do understand that we are just asking for their level of expertise, but they are outnumbered in terms of, it's not like there are multiple staff members from the department. It will be one person. So I just would like for us to consider that. But, you know, depending on who that person is and, you know, there, I understand that there may be, you know, some concern.
Well, I have concerns depending on who it is from NDS too. But what was proposed just now is Alex.
Yeah. And I think knowing Alex, Alex, Mr. Ikafuna, he would do this no matter whether it was a voting or non-voting member. But I do think that 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 expertise, having somebody vested and feeling like we're actually running to into that with the PCRB. Our non-voting member just resigned because they didn't feel like they had, that it really mattered and that anyone ever even, you know, took their opinion seriously. So that's just, it's just something to think about as we consider. I mean, that wasn't the only reason they resigned, but in their list of why is they talked about, about that.
So what I would say is that with the latest thing that just happened with Crescent Halls, it would have been helpful to have someone who could say, hey, this can't move forward and this can't move forward and that can't move forward. Instead of we moving forward and then they come in and just shut the whole thing down or part of the work down. So I think that one of the reasons why I kind of like that idea is that we've been threading waters for a while now on both projects. Trying to figure out or listening, you know, listening to people, not knowing if we are getting the right information or the wrong information. Because state law is different from city ordinance and all of that kind of stuff. And so we needed to have that. I mean, you know, we ran into a problem with, you know, Phase One and we ran into a problem with Phase Two almost didn't get approved. And now this thing that just popped up here lately, it would have been helpful, I think, to all parties. Or if there was a way where, you know, someone could say, hey, this has to happen first before you can move on to this. And that's why I think like, and true, Lisa, I am with you. I do have some problems with that department. So right now, you know, Alex seems to be supportive and be interested. And so I think that's why I would support Mr. Sales' idea that we're recommending that we have someone like Alex who can help us to make sure nothing gets shut down. Because if it get, when the, if the project gets shut down, it's time and money and it's disappointing the residents.
So I think, I mean, I think all of that makes sense. So this might be an impossible thing to ask or like to pull off. But it sounds like there are some legitimate concerns about having a voting member and legitimate concerns about not having a voting member of NDS. And I think we have to make a decision or have a policy that can't constantly shift depending upon who's in the role because that person might shift. And we can't like say like, oh, we're okay with this person voting, but not this person. And so I'm just wondering if there's any other structure in which people can be invested and feel as though their opinions are being taken really seriously without making them officially voting members. If people have concerns about saying like, we'll cede that control in the long term. And then the answer might be no, it's either like it's voting or not. But I'm just wondering if there's a way to make an NDS invested in the project to want to see it through without necessarily turning over a voting position to them. Or if people feel like there's enough votes that it doesn't matter. I mean, I'm, it's an open question.
I've got it.
I think one, I'm sorry, Lisa.
No, no, go ahead.
I think one thing Professor Harris have taught me is that all planners take an oath to work with the community, right? And I knew that would get your attention, right? And those plans, you know, I haven't seen where they have been been supportive of the low-income community. They, you know, but anyway, I'll leave it at that. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, I can, okay. So there's a lot of things that go into NDS and it's not just planning. So one of the things that halted some of that process with South First Street was the plan review. So it was engineering, it was planning, it was all the folks. So if the reality is, is if Alex has jurisdiction or authority over the people reviewing the plans, then this is a great idea. If he has no authority within NDS, then we're going to be right back where we were. We just got somebody else from NDS going, oh, I can't make anything happen. So this would be my suggestion. If, did I just not see, and I'm sorry, I was looking, did I not see that there was a new appointment made of a new deputy director over?
But that person doesn't, yes, Mr. Sanders.
Well, so here's the thing, if we don't get the buy-in for, from that person over, because I will tell you, in the room making these decisions last time was the deputy city manager.
But I think.
Over NDS.
But I think we have a, you know, a shift in maybe mindset at that level. And hopefully, that person in NDS will be able to do their job. I don't know if someone just starting. Because Mr. Boils is dealing with this now, trying to kind of get a handle on what changes need to be made. And even, I know they're not happening, meaning as rapidly as some people would like for them to happen. And they've been going on forever, right? It's not just a few years, but decades. So I understand where, I know exactly where you're going. I don't know if someone new who's just trying to get their footing, but bringing that person in as, to say, hey, this is what's going on. And we already have had those discussions with Chip, who is saying that he's committed, right, to making sure affordable housing. There was a breakdown at every level with the issue that we're talking about right there. And it started with the top level just saying halt, stop, right?
Yes, absolutely. I was sitting in the room when they said it.
Yeah, so if that doesn't happen, then that, hopefully, we get to a different space.
Well, so this is what I'm saying. I'm not suggesting that that new deputy city manager be on the, but what I'm saying is, is I think there needs to be a meeting with Mr. Sales, Mayor, Chip, and this new deputy city manager over NDS. And create, we create memorandums of understanding all the time in the city. And create a memorandum of understanding. So that if we appoint Alex, voting or not, that he has some authority to get something done and move some stuff. So this is, I happen to work for another locality. We have. Say again?
You gotta be in the room too, Lisa.
Whatever. I mean, I, but we, there's, you can create within NDS a special projects person to make sure that these memorandums of understanding happen. So if you don't have Chip and this new deputy's buy-in to give Alex that authority, then it'll be great to have him on there. But if he's got no teeth, I mean, you know, or.
And we have, and only another thing I was going to add with the project management team, we have the avenue to create that already set up that we just have to, where CRHA, FAR and the city sits on. So where we can bring them in. Because the new other deputy that was just hired that started on the 11th, she is actually going to be the representative on for that level of leadership in the city right now. But we can also bring, once the other new deputy starts, bring them in. And if that's an MOU, then it becomes a MOU.
Well, I was going to suggest Ms. Marshall as well, just because everything should go through an equity lens.
Yeah. And we, we talked about that in the PMT meetings.
And I'll be happy to sit in on any meeting you need me to. I do happen to know how things flow with getting a plan approved, getting inspections done and things like that so that projects don't shut down.
Yep.
It's unconscionable to me for us to be working with the city and we get to a point where something shut down and nobody knows about it.
Blew my mind when I heard it. Blew my mind. But anyway, we got work for you, Lisa.
And then maybe the, what month is it? This May. So either the June or July PMT meeting that we can spend that meeting talking with the new deputies and even having the city manager present at that meeting too, so that everyone knows what the people sitting on this committee from the cities and will be asked to do. But we started having that conversation in that meeting too. So I think, I know from an NDS standpoint that, you know, Alex talked about agreement there. And he's been, I think, very helpful and instrumental in the PMT work. So hopefully, that continues.
As long as he's got the backing and the leverage to be able to make things happen in NDS.
And I did talk and meet with Chip Boils, the city manager, about Alex being more involved in the process and how to ensure we don't have another stop work order without first initially having a communication with the city, which is an investor. They have millions of dollars in these projects. They're an investor. We should definitely be communicating with each other.
Yeah. And if there, if something costs more at the point, you know, at some point because of having to stop work and delays and things like that, then there are going to be requests from the city to, if we, you know, if they can help, we, they, you know, can help with that. And so it's in everybody's best interest to, you know, move things forward. But more importantly, to make sure that our families are living in housing that are healthy and safe. You know, physical structures and the external environment too. So if we can get everybody on the same page with that being our common goal and then not letting anything to delay that. Because last year, at least with the incident that you're talking about, I don't know, we keep moving from first names and commissioners. I'm getting confused. But that would have been a two-year delay. And so it's important to understand what those delays mean in terms of progress for the ultimate goal.
But that's my point, because I sat in that, in that conference room and the head deputy, whatever, city manager said, what do you want me to do? Have them work on the weekend? I said, yes, I do. Yes, I want you to have them work on the weekend. This is that important. I'm so sorry that you'll have to work on the weekend, but I do. And so if we don't have that kind of leadership to move that forward, because there's buy-in from leadership, but if we're not pushing down that buy-in from staff, then as much as you want that leadership to know every detail that's going on during the day, we're not going to know, you know, you may not know that an engineer was going out to stop the stop work order or a building official is going out to put a stop work order for whatever reason. They may not know that minutia.
Yeah. And I think creating the avenue, because one of the things that, even though staff should have, I feel and said to them, they should have done things totally different in that two-week time period leading up to all of us getting involved. But one thing that was clear that I did talk to Red Light about is that if we have from this end, CRHA, Red Light Management, that there are people who are working on the project who may not be doing their part, then that needs to be a discussion too, because that was exactly what staff was able to come back with. And so whoever's on this committee, we have to all be open to having the hard conversations with each other and addressing them.
Well, that's a, you and I can talk about that offline. I follow the timeline. And I put together all the pieces on that. But there's still plenty of time. There should have still been plenty of time.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And even with this last thing with Crescent Halls, you know, even with this last one, you know, it just shouldn't have happened the way it happened, so.
What exactly did they say that the stop worker was for, for that one? That's the part I missed.
Mr. Sales?
So the project, there was a site plan amendment because there were some temporary parking spaces that were going to be relocated. um because there were some temporary parking spaces that are gonna be relocated. Um, there was an addition um entryway uh that was added. Um, there was a smoking area that was added. And so a site plan amendment was done on Crescent Hall. So it was not originally submitted. Um, because there wasn't any plan to um do more than 6,000 square feet worth of ground disturbance. So a site plan amendment was not completed. It was just gonna be the construction road to get to the building to actually do the work. So where the trash chute was gonna be and where the skip place was gonna be to get the workers upstairs and downstairs. Um, so that changed, so a site plan amendment was done. Uh, our team continued to go for it with the road, because typically you could do the construction road and not have an issue uh because they weren't going to disturb so much square feet. It's less than 6,000. Um, well, in the site plan amendment, they included that road on the site plan. So the city uh said, hey, you can't move forth with it. This was after the fact. Um, and this is one of the reasons why we asked to have this amendment to the um redevelopment committee. City employees were involved in these conversations. They were present uh where we were discussing moving forward and where we were in the process. And not one time did one of the city representatives say, hey, no, gotta slow down. You missed his step. And that's why we say, hey, if it's not working that way, then clearly we need to switch this up and do something different, because that's what should have happened. And I've spoke with um city manager Boles and he agrees it should have went that way. We should not have found out. Um, I didn't find out from a city employee. I found out from someone else that was happening and that was the process.
So engineering put a stop work order on it?
Um, I think it was, yes, it was, it was definitely from NDS.
But, but it was an engineer. So they can only, it's, they're pretty, pretty much it's building officials or engineers can put the stop work orders. They can't put a stop work order because you didn't get a site plan unless you've moved dirt. So it had to be an engineering department.
Well, the issue was, hey, you all create a, a road that you showed in your site plan amendment. So you started work without having a approved site plan.
You made her disappear.
Her head exploded. She actually exploded. Um. Okay, so with all this, do you have enough to move forward? I feel like there's still a question of whether the city person should be a voting member or not. I think we all agree a city person needs to be there in the room, as you were saying, to warn us and, well, to work with us. Um.
I, I do think we need some more guidance on whether it's a voting or not, because we are, we're gonna have items that come up to the redevelopment committee pretty like, probably within the next three weeks. Uh, because we're talking about um solicitations for engineering services. Um, RFP for a contractor to do pricing at phase two. Uh, you're talking about architectural services. So we're gonna need, we're gonna need someone, we need to know if that's a voting member or not um to move forward with that. And you don't have to make that decision tonight. We can, if you wanna sleep on it and we'll have it at the next meeting. Um, in case there's more questions or if you wanna dive into it a little deeper, uh, we can wait on it. But we do need guidance on that, because I don't think it's been clear yet.
Can you um relist who the current, what the current makeup of the redevelopment committee is? Because I don't think that was on the, just for people who aren't usually there. I don't see it. I don't think that was on the proposal for the admin committee, like what's currently in place.
And the admin committee is gonna be everyone that's a voting member. So give me one second.
Sorry. That might help us see the total.
Now showing off.
What are you doing?
Joy is so weak.
Oh, God. He let me cut my cable.
So I, I would say based on the makeup of this and um the um, that the city rep is one of nine, that I would support the person being a voting member. But um, let me just leave it before the but to not confuse anything. That's just a pretty strong group. I don't think any one person would be able to come in and do their own thing with this group. So it'll be 10 people now, right? Because we're gonna add the Sixth Street and the individual from Sixth Street.
Yep. Well, if you add the individual from Sixth Street, then you take out the voting member for the city rep. And in that way, there'd be nine voting, shouldn't be a tie.
Okay, any other thoughts about whether the position should be voting or non-voting?
I, I still think, I, I have to, I still think non-voting, just because I feel like the city should be there anyway. The expertise should be there. It's part of the city's investment and interest. It's, you know, I, I almost feel like it's weird for someone who's going to be looking at a site plan to also be voting to move the site plan forward, like a client, you know, like a I don't, like, we're more like the client of the city, you know, coming to them with projects. So it might be a little strange for them to be voting on it.
So they're like the client rep?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think at this point, um we're probably already closer to know non-voting versus voting. But asking for the NDS member, individual from NDS to be a non-voting member on the committee. Okay.
Everyone okay with that? Or we're letting Mr. Sales know? That's our feedback.
That works.
All right, um, what are we doing? We are Mr. Sales. So I don't know if that's all in terms of the redevelopment update. Um, we had on the agenda, Mr. Sales, that you would tell us about sort of any COVID, you know, any updates from your end. Joy, what is going on?
Joy, you just gotta mute yourself. So I'll give a update on where we are with public housing, HCV, and then general with the Housing Authority. Um, and it'll be COVID-based. Uh, so right now we have 14 vacant units that are active, which means they would take less than 30 days to turn. Uh, three of those are completed and three more will be completed by the, by Friday, by the close of business on Friday. Uh, which will bring us to about, if we lease them up next week, it'll bring us, it's about 98% occupancy, which is pretty good. Uh, we have 16 are under mod, which means they, the work is so extensive, it's going to require more than 30 days to complete. Um, I know we have completed one of them. And I believe we have a team that's gonna be working on two of them at Mickey Drive uh after they complete their current units. Uh, we also uh submitted an application for additional shortfall funding. It's approximately $600,000. It's very similar to the last um uh grant we received, which I think was closer to $800,000. Uh, we received less this time because we were able to reduce our expenses, so it shows less of a liability. Uh, for the HCV update, we have 396 total vouchers leased. We are, we were awarded 15 additional vouchers through the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. And that program is designed for individuals that are homeless or at risk of being homeless. Um, and that's a program that's designed to give assistance for 18 months. Uh, we did ask for additional vouchers up to 100. Uh, we'll see how much they give us. Uh, they, I believe, awarded vouchers to about 900 housing authorities. And we do have a new HCV manager. Her name is Consuela Knight. She comes for, comes to us from North Carolina. She is not on the call tonight. Uh, but she will be at the next meeting um in case, well, for you all to meet her and for her to give updates. Uh, I did the financial report today for um HUD and we are at a 2.44 for a month of reserve. The goal is to get to a 2.0, so we are at 2.44 so far this month. We'll track it each month. We have to submit a report to HUD to show where we are each month. So I'll be able to provide that information to the board going forward. Um, there was not a financial report in the board package. And that was because when we looked at the information, um, I made a decision not to provide it because it just was not accurate enough. Um, I'd rather provide you all with thorough information than information that's gonna paint a good picture uh but not show all our liabilities. So we, going through previous reports, we haven't done a good job of recording, um. I should let Mary Lou give an update on this, but we haven't, I'll let her jump on after so she can correct me. We haven't done a great job of recording the liabilities on our actual journal. So if we use a credit card to pay it, sometimes that isn't transferred over to the actual fund that it should be paid under. And sometimes it may take 30 days or 45 days for that to occur. So you're getting, that correction will happen, but it'll happen 45 days down the road. And so when you look at your picture, it doesn't actually show that because it went on a credit card bill. And so we are looking to do a better job of getting that information and put it in the system, so it provides accurate information. Um, and so we went, Mary Lou spent all weekend going through the financials to try to get something that was clear. And what she provided was much clearer than what was previously provided, but there was still some gaps. And I would rather err on the side of caution and provide accurate information. So Mary Lou, can you give a little update on where we are with financials and uh some of the challenges you run into?
Yeah, I, the, the main thing that um John's talking about is the ACH transactions. There's a lot of transactions that are automatically, we're paying the bills, we're trying to get the bills paid on time. And that's been happening pretty consistently since I've been here. We've been putting a lot more focus to make sure that, you know, things are going out the door on time. But what's happening is like, oh, jump online and pay that. And then like, you know, it's typical vendor accounts, like a Lowe's bill, which we spend $5,000 to $7,000 a month at Lowe's. And we're not getting all the receipts in, so we can't allocate what um communities it's going to, what properties it's going to, what line item it's going to. So we just can't get, get caught up. And on top of that, you know, I spent a lot of time focusing on April to try to get that pretty accurate. And to be fair, John, we're, we're pretty close. And like, I kinda said to him, I'm like, I know there's a lot of transactions that, a lot of things have been done here for expediency and very little has been done for accuracy. And um, believe it or not, I am really looking forward to getting the finance committee going because we need to be more concerned about what's happening. There's a lot of process and procedure things here that has, have not been happening, I think, since the last full-time finance director left in terms of um tracking entries and making sure that things are done and making sure that they're done accurately. Um, you know, before uh I kinda focused on April, our open enrollment is, is coming up for um our fringe benefits. And so I kinda had to do a deep dive on retirement. And there's some issues there with how we're recording it and how we're deducting it. And, you know, are we giving the right um payments for each employee? Are we taking enough out of their paycheck? And if we're short, it's on us. We still have to pay the retirement company if we didn't take enough out of their paycheck. So there's just a, there's like a lot of li- little issues on uh of those types of things that um require a lot of attention. It's not something that's like, well, let's just go fix it. You've gotta figure out what happened, when it happened, was it recorded, where was it recorded? And um, it's just been kind of um snowballing for as long as this position has been vacant. Because while the bills are getting paid and things get in the books eventually, it, it all tends to happen in a very short period of time before something is due. And I find myself falling in that same trap. I think um, I'm putting a, a lot of pressure on the new accountant that we have starting in two weeks, because it's like, once she starts, everything will be great. But um, i- in reality, it will help with all the nitty-gritty, because for the last several months, you know, I've tried to wrap my hands around payroll. I've been the payroll clerk, you know, I've been the um file person or not. Um, and, you know, the move and everything on top of it. There just is not enough hours in the day to get everything straightened out. So there's just a lot of things that need attention. And, and we're doing it, we're getting through it. I told John, like, we need time, you know? It's um, it's hard to fix it all at once, but um, we're not paying bills that we're not using anymore, at least not the ones that I've found, because we've run across a lot of that. Like, oh, here's a bill, you know, we owe them, we're paying them 50 bucks a month for something. What's it for? A phone line that we haven't used in three years. So there's been, I, 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 I hate to say it, there's been more than that than I would care to admit or anyone here would probably care to admit. So.
I think we knew how important filling the position was. And again, as someone who sat in on those interviews, thank you for being here. And glad that you're sticking it out um with us and hope that, I mean, I don't know what the date is for the finance committee um starting up, but I think um, because you and Dr. Henry, right, that'll be on that. So I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, um, right now, um, it's one of the things we need to talk, John, about. But probably sometime mid-June or early July, there's um the initial end-of-year stuff that needs to get done that um kinda, you know, kind of is all hitting at once also. Like I said, I was trying to get April, because I just, you know, I thought I'd been here long enough. We had a fresh start. Um, April 1 with the start of the fiscal year. So what's done in the past is done in the past and we'll correct it as best, as best I can. And I think we've um caught a lot of things since I started in December. Um, and we still have a lot of catching up to do, but I wanted April 1 going forward to be as clean as we can make it. So we'll start with that. And once we get that right, there's some changes that we can make operationally with the systems that we're using to provide better reports, to provide information, to keep track of things. You know, not that anyone needs to dive into the details, but when you look at a financial statement, we should know what our workers' comp is. We should know what we're paying um for the retirees that had left us many years ago. Um, there's certain things that kinda get buried in the way the financial statements are presented now. So um, there's big plans. Hopefully we'll get to execute them in the not-too-distant future. So.
Thank you, Mary Lou. And she touched on one of the other points I had was, we're gonna be working with the FEDROS to close out FY 2021. Uh, that's actually due, the final deadline is the middle of June. So like she said, after that, we can focus on getting the finance committee up and running. Um, so shooting for July, um, I knew we had a lot going on. We had the budget. Uh, then end of the year, starting of a new year, plus cleaning up everything we already had going on. I knew it was too much to get it started um earlier than that. So I hope that works with all the commissioners, but we're gonna be shooting for the beginning of July. So I hope that works with all the commissioners, but we're going to be shooting for the beginning of July. For the finance committee. And the last thing I have is, uh, the CMAP will be submitted for the HCV program. And the CMAP is the Section 8 Assessment. We do it ourselves and then HUD will come and audit our assessment. So Melinda and Consuela are both working on that now. And that is all I have. Any questions from any commissioners?
No, it sounds, it sounds like a lot of good work. I guess I have a question. When we have been looking at the correct, what, what is it called? The CAPS, the corrective action plan? So when they, after they do an audit, will there be a sort of a. I guess I'm wondering when we can see the next, like, you know, status, you know, how are we doing on all the different pieces that they had. Laid out.
I think we'll have. The CMAP, I believe, after we submit ours, I think HUD will either do a onsite review, which I don't think will. I don't think that will happen. I think it's going to be a remote one. I think they're going to do that probably July, August for the HCV program. So we'll have an answer on that one then. Public housing, that one's a little tricky. Because the, so they're going to start doing the, um. React inspections, but it won't be React, it'll be Inspire. But they won't score them. So we need them to be scored in order to get out of trouble status. But they are not scoring them this year because they know, hey, maintenance wasn't allowed inside of most units. For a large period of time. So we expect there's going to be issues in units. From lack of maintenance being in there because for a large portion, we were only addressing emergency work orders. That has opened up, but there's still a backlog. Plus inspections haven't been done. Normally there's a six-month inspection and then a one-year inspection of units. That hasn't been done because of COVID. So, um, they're not going to score them, but they're going to complete them. So that program is still a little tricky. It's still up in the air. I asked that same question at the last HUD meeting. So what are you all going to do? And they don't know yet. It's still, I mean, this is a first for them. I don't think they've ever had to deal with this before. Normally it's, hey, every year scored. But this is the first year where it won't be scored. So I can't give you an answer on public housing, but we have a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. So I'll look to get some more guidance in.
Yeah, I mean, everything seems to be moving in the right direction. You know, all this hard work to get all of the scores where they need to be. I just wondered. I remember their spreadsheet. And just, you know, make sure we know where we are on that. Okay.
That I wanted to, um. The Section 3. Report, the L. Setting up an MOU with the city. That's something that we need to, you know, have a discussion about as soon as possible. I was talking to Chip today, just telling him that the person who I was sure could set that up. You know, and deliver is not there anymore. And so I don't even know what that looks like. So we need to, um. You know, have those conversations, um, as, you know, soon as possible. So I just wanted to. To share that.
I did reach out to, um, I believe it's Chris Engel about that and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. Why don't we move? Anyone else before I'm going to move to public comments? Any other questions for Mr. Sales? Okay. We're starting to get silly here. Let's move to public comments. Oh, and Mr. Rice, I think Ms. Slaughter went back over into the. Uh, attendee section. She was just texting me for some reason, so.
Okay, I just, she is permitted to speak, so she's currently muted now.
Okay, thank you.
And moving on to public comment, yes, if anybody would like to address the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon. Or press star nine if you're joining us by phone. And Brandon Collins has his hand up. And Brandon, you're on with the board. You have three minutes.
Good evening again, Brandon Collins. I work for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. We are the federally and locally recognized resident council. Jurisdiction-wide and the resident advisory board. I just wanted to say. Y'all have had a great meeting. I haven't seen a meeting this in-depth in a while and I, I really appreciate it. There were a lot of really important things discussed and some movement going forward. I did want to just point out, I, I do think we have a little bit of work to do. When it comes to, uh, the relationship with the police department. And, and what may be an acceptable path forward. That's really all I'm going to comment on that, but I, I do think. Going to have to sit down and have a conversation as soon as possible. And maybe tomorrow's safety committee meeting is the place to do that. Otherwise, a great meeting. I just want to put in a plug for anybody who's watching who lives in public housing. Please give us a call at FAR 434-984-3255 if you need anything. And particularly if you live at West Haven or Sixth Street. Please feel free to join us for workshops this week, Wednesday at Sixth Street at 2:30. And there will be many more opportunities ahead for Sixth Street. And as well for West Haven this Thursday, two workshops, one at 2:30 and one at 6:00 PM. And again, there will be many opportunities, but we really are looking forward to meeting with as many people as possible. To see what residents' visions are for the future.
If anybody else would like to address the board at this time, please click your raised hand icon. I see no other hands here.
Hey, great. And, um, thank you to FAR for getting those workshops started. As soon, as soon as possible, which they did. Okay, um, I think we're ready to adjourn. Can we get a motion?
A motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, Ms. Dean.
Chairperson? Commissioner Goldblatt? Commissioner Lisa Green? Commissioner Maddie Green? Dr. Henry? Commissioner Slaughter? Mayor Walker?